Stephanie, they both ate garlic, just in my eye.
Oh, sorry.
See me over there?
That's because there's a date at all.
A little bit there.
I wanna see it, Steph.
Just a little bit over there.
Oh, you gotta see that. Is that the fudge and then on?
All right, so let's open our regular scheduled board meeting of negative three seven and same.
Hail to the nations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, wait, has a copy of the agenda? Is there any, do you like to add or maybe? And if we're rushed, you have other things to mention?
Can you add the twelve point six again?
Oh, yeah, sorry, thank you, thank you, please remind me, we have some late items. Twelve point one, elementary volunteer approval. Twelve point two, twelve point three, and twelve point four are free resolutions. And then twelve point five is a coaching recommendation. Is that correct?
Yes, I don't know, twelve point six is an additional.
Okay, so we have twelve point five as coaching recommendation and twelve point six as coaching recommendation. You know, the motion's been made that we have those two items. The second?
The second.
The second and two. Approve the agenda with those added items, all those, if they would say aye. If you oppose, all right, question carries. So, approval of the minutes, we have four sets of minutes. We had executive session minutes from the twenty fifth of August and regular session from the twenty fifth. And again, executive on the fifth of September, every regular. So, yes, Mr. Chair, the board books that were transitioning, it separates the two now. And so that's why you see separate exact session, regular for both those dates.
And it will separate out work session last week, so if we had a work session, there would be two separate sessions.
I'm gonna give you the names you're saying.
All seconds?
All of them? I just want.
All of them. One, two.
Can I go up to accept minutes for maybe nine of them here?
Um, could, yes, yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
So I can't verify them either.
Yeah.
What would we guys did?
You could, based upon their recommendation, because they were here.
Okay.
So the motion's been made, the second, to approve the four sets of minutes as presented in a discussion. If any of you say aye?
Aye.
If you oppose, all right, motion carries. Correspondence? None from my chair, Mr. Chair. Public comment? Is there any public comment? Nope. Okay. All the items. Then, Mr. Chair. Reports? Do we have a soccer field update from Carol? Mr. Anderson?
Uh, I really don't have a lot to update. The soccer field. After finished the irrigation system that is in place.
It is in place.
Uh, field is up to, is up to grade. We've pretty much decided to wait till next spring to get sod on the field. We spent more money than we planned. We had to screen topsoil, we couldn't find any topsoil. We talked about, I mentioned that last time.
So, so did you, did you wind up putting a fairly thick coat of, what's it, the white material underneath it?
No, we didn't use a whole lot. We did use some.
Some.
To fill up some of the space. Uh, but we found some topsoil that we could screen, we had quite a few rocks in it.
Oh, something like that.
We screened it and we used that. Uh, we got it for free, but we had to pay for screening it. So, uh, all of the, all of the bills to date have came in. We haven't got a bill from the town of Lakeview, we ordered the sprinkler piping materials through the town of Lakeview. Uh, we haven't seen any bills yet. We applied for the Collins McDonald money, but we received, Sean signed the letter on that to release the comments, so we'll pay those bills and we're at.
Okay, good. Think are we ready for next season?
Yeah, I think so.
Awesome.
Is the, is the grade final, it'll be sod put on the final grade, or will it be a finishing top dressing to smooth it up?
No, it's pretty final, but we'll need some, some green, some smoothing.
Smooth, just a little.
Especially if it sits on the ground. So we'll have to do.
Sean, when I discussed sod versus seed?
Well, I'd really love to seed it because cedar sod, to seed it, because of the cost is not even comparable.
But you know winter and, and snow are good covers for seeding.
Yeah. Do you think we would have a soccer field next, next season if we seed it?
I wouldn't seed it till next spring.
Oh, you wouldn't, you wouldn't do it over the snow seeding?
Over the snow seeding?
The seeding, seeding and then the snow sets on the lakes?
Oh, I guess you'd snow seed it, but I wouldn't seed it now.
Yeah, that's the trend.
Wouldn't you do it in November?
Well, you'd seed it when it's frozen, and if there's snow, you'd seed it frost seeded. But then that wouldn't give us the opportunity to put that fight, I mean, it, it, it looks good, but it, it looks like it could use a little, for soccer, it could use a little.
It needs, it needs some fine grating, but we haven't the material there, so.
I mean, if, if it was, if it was seeded in the spring, early, with the irrigation utilized, I think if, if you did not utilize it through the summer, you could probably have it ready for, for soccer season by the time school started. And, I mean, you wouldn't want, there'd be a little damaged turf, but you could reseed some of those sods, but, because the cost, turf, you know, sod is gonna be expensive.
But yeah, it's a twenty-five thousand dollar bill.
But I was looking, I, I haven't got all the stuff back, but I've been investigating some seed varieties and some rates, and so I, that's what I threw the, just. Yeah, that's, you know, at this point, I have a contact that would donate the seed. And that would free up budget for a lot of the things that are spensing or sidewalks or infrastructure associated with the soccer field.
Wouldn't we have defense if we seeded to keep people off?
Well, we'd have to do something.
Yeah. You're talking about permanent fence?
I think we have to fence it anyway, even for safety, because of containment of soccer balls and things, but we haven't determined all that yet, we still need to figure all that out.
At least on the streets.
My, my point is that if we can get the seed donated, that frees up a lot of those available funds to be able to do things of that nature. But I do know that we're also working on possible option of getting sod donated too. And if we get sod donated, I think then it becomes a very simple answer about what we should do, and that would still achieve the same thing for budget, whatever those Canadian dollars might be. So, and we still, you know, if, I think if we're in agreement that we're gonna wait until spring to either seed it or sod it, then we have some time to work through these things. And see where we're at with those things. Okay. Okay, thanks, it's good and nice.
I think it's a good idea to get started. Good magnet for fun.
It's exciting project. Definitely necessary, isn't that, Jesse?
Yeah.
Building reports, for the principals. Mr. Chair, do you have school report from LHS DMS, and also the one from Fremont eighty-eight Union Schools in front of you? Principal's over here to answer any questions that you may have.
Well. That the building report includes this student numbers or?
Mine usually does, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so, so how are they looking there, Will?
Pretty little bit from last year. I've got the September recording and also the October recording here, September we were up, actually, excuse me, we were down by two from last spring, but we had a few walk in the door over the last month, it was getting six all the month of September or something. And now we're three ninety. In Fremont and Union.
Looking good.
So we're holding. I think it's good and steady is about the best way to put it.
How about you guys at the high school?
We're up at the high school, we have about nine kids. And we're just, we're holding steady in the middle school.
Well, that's good, that'll be good. I saw the historic graph from the year I graduated high school. Does it, does it dumb specifically, so the oldest school member?
Was that dizzy nineteen ninety-five?
Ninety-four.
Yes.
That's the graph, the graph starts on my graduation year.
The graph is somewhere in here, just keep adding, good. We'll, we'll see that later. Has the split teacher point with that union helped really get some of the?
Yes, it has, thank you. It's also helped kindergarten down Fremont, so. Very grateful to you guys for doing that, and it has helped even a lot. Teacher, okay, help me live.
Yeah, especially the language piece, first grade being a school is what she's doing out there, and Mrs. Moore can really focus on the kindergarten, so that's, that's, that's what we've done with the placement out there. She is first grade all morning. There's like fifteen in first, now I've got the numbers right here, I have the numbers, I think there's fifteen in first grade and twelve in kindergarten, so.
Yeah.
Very large first grade class, so anyway, it's, uh, yeah, it's been a huge help to us, and once again, thank you.
Fremont kindergarten classes are good too.
Yeah, yeah, but I think we asked, we, uh, they came in much higher than we thought they would originally last spring. When, you just never know what kindergarten roundup, you know, the number that you see at kindergarten roundup, and what is actually, you're gonna walk through that door in September. You know, you just don't have any kind of a gauge. We usually look at the number and we have usually five onto it, that's kind of our safeguard, but it was, it was, uh, let's say it came in, we had thirty-five, kindergarten roundup, it came in, as you can see, at forty-three, so.
That's a lot of kindergarten. And that teacher, she helps with the kindergarten?
She does, we split the afternoon kindergarten, she does one section, and Mrs. Lee does the other section, so. Any other questions? The donated reports? Uh, the donated beef?
So I was contacted back in the first part of the day, so I was by, um, Joey Brown, who's a manager at J Spirit. And J Spirit was, had previously, and also Joe collaboratively, would donate to Paisley High School, which his kids are now coming here, so I wanted to do that for here as well. And so they did manage to get one lot, and we got it all USDA approved and stamped sealed. And it's done, I just got up and over them as I came here this, this evening, it's done. And I'm contemplating sending up a sub bus driver this week to go get it, so that we have it for Agawear to stay. So that Jennifer can use that for her program there. And so we just wanted to extend thanks to the J Spirit, Joe, and then also Burn's Ranch, we need to process it, they also donated their processing for us also. So the whole thing got.
That and his parents?
That's him and his parents, yeah. So the whole thing was, was donated and feel very fortunate that we were able to do that.
The neat thing about what Janet did is she was able to piece together what we've been trying to do for a while. And you used a USD plant in Primeville, plus a meat processor out of Burns, that does do some Lakeview services, is that correct?
Um, how it kinda come about is they do Burns and Crane, they service to them as well up there, so they knew that, when I called panic, said, ah, but they, they, they said, nope, we are perfectly good, we, we do this for Burns, we just got done doing Burns, and we service to Crane, which is not very far, a little ways, but. So we said, no, we are form good with coming in here, and I know that the J Spirit did a lot of donation this year to various entities, just out of this sale here for the high school kids. So I thought that was a very worthwhile adventure.
So now that we have this process in place, we're hoping to attract more of the donation in the future. And we certainly are looking forward to that, because we've now figured out the secret to getting it done, hundred percent donated, and that's just nothing but good for our kids, it's gonna be for the cafeteria program. As well as could be used for concessions and for Agawear stays and things of that nature. Sorry, can you?
That's all right, it was a steer, I don't think we hamburgered the whole thing? We didn't hamburger the whole thing. I caught in contact with Jennifer to see what she could use for E F A projects and that sort of thing, so she did request like some of the roasts and the tri tips. Jesse requested patties, and we processed them and packaged it, three times packaged, so that we can get it to Union and some of it.
Did anybody request the T-bones, because if not? What would you list for next time? We're really excited about this program, so I want to encourage people in the room, you have to spread the word, I mean, we know there's ranchers out there that are interested in doing this type of thing. For Paisley, it was a little easier, because they're not USDA certified cafeteria program, but we are, and so we have a little more stringent compliance requirements, so.
So did, is it Burn's?
They donated the processing.
So did they take it to Primeville?
Actually, I think Joe took it to Primeville.
Because that's the catch.
It's USDA inspection.
Yeah.
Yes. Re-stamped on.
And, and actually, if it was USDA inspected, we could even work with, even Ross and Kelly to do some, some processing. Lonely, it's the USDA inspection up there, and once it is, then we can look that out.
And the reason why it went to Burn's is because Joe, basically.
Yeah, which was good, because they already have that understanding and they kind of, yeah, it, it was easier to jump through those hoops, but now that we've done it, you could ranch out and see what other options there are.
We need to call that Masami Foods and kind of false, because they're USDA.
But are they even in business?
Do they go into business?
I think so. I think that, don't quote me on that, we have a cafeteria meeting for two years.
But, but Masami, we've dealt with them in the past, and just, they are simply, they're, they have a market, and Japanese market, and they don't want, they, they are invested in deviating from that.
I suppose, they're just hogs too?
They're just hogs.
They're hogs, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's correct.
I wonder if they're Swedish, is there USDA member?
I think.
Primeville's our closest one.
I think Primeville is our closest one.
So it's just getting, because Ross and Kelly can butcher it, I was gonna say something else.
It's the USDA.
It has to be a USDA kill for it.
So Burn's are USDA, come on.
No, Primeville is the kill.
Oh, they just.
They took the live animal, right?
They took the live kill.
Killed it, holed it, inspected it, and then shipped to the carcass, then you can ship to the carcass, Burn's or to making lockers or.
Oh, well, that's easier, it's easier to move alive animal than to get it in there.
Okay.
Doesn't have to be a vest, yes. You have vest ears. That's a lot. Stop talking.
All right, well, that's great. Do we need to prepare a, a letter of thanks to the other guys?
They're, they're in the packet, and it includes myself and the board's directors.
Thank you, Jen, that's awesome.
All right, the Safe dividend?
So, I've been in a couple meetings with the Safe, I believe that it'll be this week or the, uh, next week, we should be seeing a check for approximately the ten thousand, four seventy-five, and that's also included in your packet. It should be page twenty-five, and it shows prior year's dividends, with the highs being about thirteen thousand. This year, we're right there, about ten, right now, so we should be getting that check by end of October.
Dividends are always based upon number of actions you claim.
And if you look at the premium every year, that marks quite a bit off.
Student enrollment? Yes, Mr. Chair, what you have in front of you is two pieces of information, one is a chart on the table. I always try and wait till the end of September, beginning of October to compare year to year, so we're trying to compare apples with apples every year, and then I've updated the chart. And it shows that we're up slightly in terms of our overall enrollment from seven forty-nine to seven sixty-three. But keep in mind, that's just a snapshot in time, we fluctuate throughout the year, and, but that's just one way that we're trying to take a look at our enrollment. Keep in mind, we're, we're funded based upon average daily membership, so we're over the course of the year, and that's what generates our funding dollars from the state. It's not just a snapshot in time, but I always try and do the table, regenerate the table this way, just so we're comparing more apples with apples. So, that's good news, and also keep in mind, any fluctuations we see in, in enrollment, it's always a year after that we see the funding difference, whether we're up or whether we're down. It takes that amount of time to react to it, so in this case, we're anticipating an upswing in, in our funding sources, because we've increased enrollment.
Okay, I gotta ask a historic question, because there's the historic enrollment data.
Sure.
So, Will, do you think that was just the baby boom passing, was the numbers of why it went down in the seventies?
Yeah, yeah, I think the baby boomer was a part of it, another thing was a part of it too, Hawaii used to come over here.
Oh, oh.
So you had, we only had around fifty or fifty-five students that came on the bus from Hawaii every morning, and were here for, I think, the late, late nineteen sixties until probably in the nineteen eighties sometime, so. But, pretty high enrollment, you see there in the late sixties and seventies, that's when Hawaii joined us.
Oh, okay, and then Hawaii quit somewhere in the?
Yeah, around eighty-one or eighty-two, I think, Darrell, do you remember?
I thought it was about eighty-six.
It was when I was working for Clonan County School District, I remember that. So, I was a family then when it happened.
It would have been, I think it would have been a freshman, he couldn't come this way.
Yeah, so, I think you're right, eighty's sometime. But, you know, I, I'm from Adele, and you look at Adele, I went out of the, like, nineteen sixty-six, sixty-seven. There are no, no, there's no kindergarten, grades one through eight, we had forty-six students in that school. Today, there's, there's six students in Adele. So, granted, there are, it is a grade, fourth grade school, a bunch up there that only has, what, six to eight also? Four, if I stand corrected.
There's twelve total out there.
Okay, baby boomer's an answer.
We had a trivial pursuit question at a dinner party, it's on Saturday night, you know what the baby boomer years were?
No, give us.
Nineteen forty-six to nineteen sixty-four. That was the baby boomer span, so.
I remember, I remember, Chelsea.
So you learned something.
That's for you.
Yeah, but, you know, the, 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 the one, the number that I always found interesting was the peak was fifty-five, peak was fifty-five. Which is later than you think, until you say, oh, Korea happened, the Korea conflict, so there's a recall of troops, and then we start again.
Yeah.
It looks like kind of union numbers that, that the kindergarten is retaining.
Yeah, they're, they're staying put, grades one and two, good numbers, and, you know, we are doing what we intended to do, we are growing union, so. A lot of folks are really liking that small rural school environment, and they're keeping their kids out there, so. Granted, there are kid, there is a kid or two coming back to town, but at the same time, it's keeping successful, they are staying, so. Good. All right. Oh, budget update.
Um, so, I kind of refanned it, um, and, and please feel free to like or dislike, or say I want more or something, but, I left the A D M numbers out, because at this point, I have up through August as a print type for Rebecca, which is last Wednesday. We're pretty slow, I think I mentioned giving thanks statements the first part of the month. Basically, on the first page there is all your revenue that's been coming in, we normally get the prior year taxes, pretty frequently all year long on a monthly basis, we won't start getting any current year taxes until about, probably towards the end of this month, and definitely in the November, it'll be our big peak, of course. Excuse me. And I think the only other thing that I really wanted to point out to you is we have another restricted grant of thirty-two hundred, that's a formative grant that we have, hoping, is it the smarter balance?
Assessment?
Yes, to help us purchase assessment tools, which we haven't expended those funds yet, but I believe we're waiting for O D E to come forward with that.
Yeah, keep in mind, there's two components of spend, smarter balance, there's the summative assessment, which is done at the end of the year, the last twelve weeks. That's kind of the apex, that's kind of like state playoffs for the football team or the basketball team or something. But then there's formative assessments that were in the midst of purchasing that tool, using those grants, grant of funds. And these interim assessments or formative assessments that are done throughout the school year are kind of snapshots that allow the teachers to see how their students are doing. Are they making adequate progress, and are they preparing for the big day of competition, which is the summative assessment we're getting? That's what you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah. So we did receive those funds, just waiting to draw those down, or utilize those funds. On the backside is all of our expenses, and keep in mind, the budget figures is July and August. I, I pro-rated that by twelve months, next year, I want to get a better idea of how much we're spending, get a little closer, instead of just taking one twelfth or two twelfths, or, you know, et cetera. But for this year, I just left it at that, knowing that next year we'll probably update that a little bit closer, come a little bit closer in there. Supplies look like they're over expended, they're really not, we're front loaded in the first part of the year, so. That, that, that looks like we're over, we're really not, we've got plenty in there as far as budget through the year. Just keep in mind that all the teachers are pretty well front loaded, August, September is when they get a big shift of supplies coming in.
There's a whole bunch of P O's that are generated at the end of every school year that aren't processed until July first, when enrolled in the budget over. And so, you know, whether it's textbooks, or additional supplies, or pins, or paper, or whatever, and that's what should be included in front of it.
And then the only other one is our insurance, which is a lump sum payment liability, general liabilities, that sort of thing. All of those insurance gets paid once a year, we pro-rate them out throughout the year, expense them out throughout the year, but we do lump sum pay them, that also gives us a little bit of a discount when we lump sum pay them. So that behooves us to do like that, so. Overall, I think we're in good shape. I don't see any issues coming up yet, we keep a pretty close eye on everything, so.
So notice this a little bit different format, so as we continue working. So, as we continue working through the new format, we're certainly open to ideas, suggestions, thoughts. If there's ever anything that you feel needs more definition, we will certainly gather that for you.
Also, keep in mind that through South Coast, I've been able to get building principals and I think Lonnie is also included in that. They can look at their budget by fund through a web-based program. So, these guys are pretty good about seeing if they're going to be over for, you know, getting close to something, being over or way under on something, plus that'll help us budget for next year also.
That's in real time. So, it powers them to see exactly where they're at according to what P Os have been processed in case they're getting close to the rail for the particular budget, budget areas.
It's as good as midnight before, so today's information was good as midnight before. I think that's helped you guys out immensely.
That's just great. I don't like it.
And it's easy and it's not, not a hard program to look at, so that's helpful.
Do we need to approve this or assist the... No, they'll just report.
Any questions? Any comments on the format?
Not yet. I did, I think I mentioned this before. I liked the fact that Mike, I couldn't track most of what he presented, but I liked it that it was in the public meeting for anyone else to see, just that it was part of the record. I think that's, that's important. That's a function of this meeting, I think. So, even though there would be a lot of stuff in there that is just really pertinent to what you do, it would at least be on record in our agenda.
And of course, this is all subject information.
Right.
I know. That makes it public, public information.
Really public. Also, keep in mind, though, that there's an ending cash balance of which we're relatively the same between the two years. So, that's a good indicator that, that we're holding steady also. So, one point six five nine versus one point six five eight, that's pretty unclose, so. Thanks, Tim.
Full business on reader board M O U and update.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I don't know if you've noticed, on Main Street, we have the reader board up and going. Announcements are being flashed across it. This is the M O U in regards to the reader board. It's been, it was generated between Mr. Bogartis, who represents the lawyer that represents the town, and Mr. Hedman, lawyer that represents our school district. So, they've all, they both looked at it and scrutinized it. The highlights are basically the school district is in charge of the sign, maintenance of the sign, installation of the sign. The town is in charge of providing the site and the site installation part of the sign. Also, the maintenance for any alteration or construction that's needed to install the sign and keep it going. They're also paying for electrical charges. They're also paying for staff employees to operate it. Also, the town is making sure that we're complying with all applicable federal, state, county statutes. The town will also maintain liability insurance for the sign. We're also agreeing with the town, mutually agreeing not to permit any fees to be charged for the use of the sign. But we're specifying that we're really, for the content of the sign, the district shall have the primary priority for placing announcements on the sign. The town should be permitted to place announcements related to emergency issues and air quality updates on the sign. And Warner Canyon Ski Hill is also permitted to place announcements as related to whether they're open or not during the ski season.
Oh, I found that in nice little settings.
Yeah.
So...
How...
How's the ski clubs?
Yeah.
Because they normally would have a sign.
Yeah, it was just because they're normally, the signs is ski old or not. But again, this is up to approval by both town council and school board. If there's changes you want to see made, now's the time to request those changes. We can certainly reflect that. We also have to keep in mind, there's only so much we can do because the sign, as busy as it is, there's only so much travel time as people go past for to view anything.
Yeah, a couple of trees, but you have a little more view, right?
You have to drive by a few times to get the whole thing ready.
You do?
There's, we need a stop sign.
It's when you get out at the quickie stop and amble in for a snack.
Try to squeak it out a little bit more to the east, but...
I think it's awesome.
Twelve inches would've made a huge difference.
Very exciting.
Do we need to approve this tonight or we can...
You don't have to. You can take it to the first reading, think on it, or you can approve it tonight.
It's all ready for approval.
Yeah, I didn't, it seems like there was a typo in here, but I can't find it.
Was there a typo?
Not that it changed anything, it said.
So, we're in the where it is. Those are causes, maybe those are causes where it is.
You know, you can prove it if you have to find the typos, I mean, we know.
It wasn't your consequence.
All right.
Yeah, I think we've found it cut in. We can't use it for any commercial use. We type A and B. Go ahead, I see that's in there. That would violate.
Right.
So, are you making the motion then, Daryl? Sure, I'll, I'll make a motion then we approve. The intergovernmental agreement between the town, Lakeview and the school district on the reader board side. I second.
So, the motion's been made and seconded to approve the intergovernmental agreement between the town, Lakeview and school district on the reader board side. Is there another expression?
Well, I do wonder how the ski hill got in here. I think it's a logical addition, but what if someone else asks to be on it also?
Well, yeah, that is true. I think it goes to ski hill because of...
Of Ray.
Of what?
I think Ray. Yeah.
Basically, you want the ski. Semi-town kind of thing.
Are they? That's what I wondered, is they're...
Yeah, it's semi-town.
Then that's easy.
Yeah. Perjury.
Connection, yeah.
Yeah, and it's also, you know, associated with our school.
It is.
Ski face.
We like that.
Ski club right there.
Okay, I just wanted to have that in. In that, yeah.
As another comment, I did see my name in there.
Yeah.
We're all done.
Right. Anderson Engineering part is completed.
So, should we accept it with that last sentence of number seven or...
I don't see a reason why we would want to take it out. I think there's some added protections there if you move it in.
Oh, got it, okay. Can you vote?
He made the motion.
He can move and vote because there's no financial gain whatsoever with this for Anderson Engineering.
Got it. Okay.
So, the motion on the table has been seconded. We have discussion. Is there any other discussion? We're ready to move forward with the vote. All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Motion carries on. Let's hear your little member. Okay.
Here.
It's page two of three.
All right, OSBA regional meeting reminder.
Yes, Mr. Chair, the OSBA regional meetings are for us in Paisley this upcoming Wednesday. Rebecca will be driving the expedition and everybody who is going would meet out in front of the district office at 5:00 P. M. You'll carpool with Rebecca to Paisley. I will meet you there because I have S P S D superintendent meetings that start much earlier in the afternoon that I doubt you'd want to be bored with, so.
Can we get a ride in the vehicle?
Yes, if you would like, or you could opt, no, you can't.
You said carpool, that's multiple.
Yes, you, yes, you can ride in the vehicle. I'm sure Rebecca will be a very safe driver.
I appreciate that.
Dinner is served. And I think you can see the agenda item topics that are in your board agenda. Legislative session conversation, promise of Oregon campaign, OSBA call to action, educating for your schools. Also, listening session, such as helping OSBA better engage board members, helping OSBA help your district with services your OSBA is providing. And then there's general updates by Betsy Lauren Jones, who's the OSBA executive director. So, I think it's a very full agenda. I think we're coming up on a legislative session that's going to be a lot of debate, especially with school funding. A lot of the billmakers are already positioning on, we have a school bills. We're talking hundreds of school bills. So, it's an important time to be involved, especially as OSBA represents our districts as well as others at the state legislature as well. Reckoning the edge. How many people are we going?
Daryl doesn't have a seat.
Daryl doesn't?
Right? No. I was going, but I'm the town, that's why I can't say.
So, is Daryl on it?
You, you try?
So, is Daryl busy?
I promised Rebecca I would go.
Okay.
Okay.
Which is out every year.
I went last year.
Five o'clock at the district office then?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sure they'll come up with all kinds of...
Are you here just to listen to the meeting or do you...
I just came to spend time with you.
Okay.
Indeed, Mr. Phil, I want to talk about Engage New York. And so, we're going to have...
I'd prefer nine point six.
Just when we have teachers, I like to try and get you at the beginning so that you're not here the whole...
Would there be an objection to move that up to our next item?
No objections.
You lack related terms.
Oh, yeah. I'm sure...
So, you want to move it up?
It sounds okay with you guys.
Yeah, so, we're done with the OSBA regional discussion. We moved out of the business and we moved nine point six up to go ahead. Let's do the Engage New York curriculum adoption request.
Okay, there's some clothes on your jacket and... With adoption of Common Core in two thousand and ten, you know, we began to realize that Saxon math, which we adopted in two thousand and eight, just didn't match up with the rigor of the Common Core. So, over the years, I've taken Debbie with me to a number of workshops where we've learned about different curriculums and everything else. And over the course of the last couple of years, Debbie kind of got the ball on where she did some supplemental curriculum in first grade and other teachers have joined on with this too as far as supplementing curriculum into the Saxon to beef it up in order to address these Common Core state standards. So, the beginning, you know, actually, I need to back up. In the last and beginning of this year, we really looked at this Engage New York program. I'm not going to tell you too much about it, I don't think these guys will talk about it. We're finding that it really addresses the Common Core need and hopefully it will prepare us for the smarter balance test that we're going to go through this year too. So, this proposal asks you to grant us adoption of Engage New York. And basically in lieu of Saxon, it is a transitional plan. We still have some folks using Saxon. Our plan is to completely be transitioned into Engage New York by next fall. But there are a number of grade levels that are already using it. But like I said, once again, this is to get your, anytime we do, any type of curriculum adoption, it has to come for you folks and that's what the purpose of this is this evening, so. So, I'm going to turn it over to Debbie. I'm going to have her talk about the origin of Engage New York. Who wants to go first? Teresa? Teresa Whitman is our new math coach. She's done a magnificent job providing materials in regard to engage our curriculum strategy, so. I'm going to draw a straw and let her go first.
Thank you. Thank you for taking us early, I appreciate it. And so, I'm in a new position, math coach for K through six. And last year, E S D asked me to be, they had a grant and they sent me to a whole year's worth. I think there was probably ten different sessions they sent me to on what's going on in math that I could bring it back to the district. At that point, many times during the sessions, they were talking about Common Core state standards and what everybody is using and where they're going and what are the standards. And one thing they kept talking about was that the textbooks that were adopted prior to Common Core just didn't meet the standards. And so, with my ears open, what I kept hearing repeatedly was Engage New York. What aligns most readily with the Common Core state standards? And they kept saying Engage New York. I didn't have any idea what that was. I came back and I talked to our teachers and Debbie and Katie McNeely had already decided that they thought that that's what aligned best with it. And as you look at it, one thing that just became really clear, we had Sarah Schule, Sarah Schule Payne as an auto town consultant come in and talk to the teachers. One of the teachers said, what do we do if we, if we are using Saxon? How do we help? There's lots of different curriculum out there. We're using Saxon, what do we do? And Sarah's response was, I don't know. So, all the curriculum that they're out there talking about, other curriculums can be like Bridges or any of the other curriculum, you can kind of spend hours trying to pull in supplemental with Saxon. That's going to be really difficult. Engage New York, since I've started, I've been doing it about a month now.
Right.
They have got an extremely, incredible amount of resources for, for teachers, for parents. They've got a website that parents can go on it. They can see the curriculum that's being taught that very day. Teachers can pull up things for, the resources for them to use. There's video library, there's what are the manipulations they need to do. The good thing about it, because we don't have the money to buy any curriculum right now. Mr. Kay, how much of the whole new curriculum?
Well, how much should we pay for language arts adoption? Two hundred and some thousand dollars.
So, we have a curriculum right now, Saxon, that doesn't meet what we need. The teachers have a brand new language arts.
Well, there is no math file there right now. I mean, they have a developer.
The next math adoption is new books seventeen, eighteen. Adoption review, look at, you know, publishers sixteen, seventeen, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
One of the things that the district did was send me up to the pine to job shadow. And actually, the math coach was very fun. And I asked the math coach up there, she has a Ph. D., she does an incredible job. I said, what curriculum are you using? She said, we're using Bridges. And I said, okay, so how are you supplementing? She said, they did patchwork and Bridges did a patch and they sent the patch to the district and they're putting it in. I said, how do you like that? And she said, it's awful. It makes no sense that you've just got these things that are just pushed in that make no sense. So, Engage New York is a complete curriculum, is online.
It's free.
The teachers...
It's free.
Other than photocopying.
Oh, photocopy. So, that's when you were talking about some of the bills, I'm thinking, you haven't seen the photocopy bill yet.
Oh, no, yes, I did.
So, that's, that's what it is. It's absolutely free, but every teacher needs the whole, all of the pages and that there's... But they already have it in their hands. The teachers who want to use it have it in their hands so they know where they're going.
If I might interject a little bit, just to give the board a little more of a history on the Engage New York. It was created using the federal race to the top dollars. And because it was created using those federal dollars, it was required that once New York developed this curriculum, that they put it on the web and make it free and available to anybody in the nation that wants to use it. That's why it's free.
And there were only two places from all of the, all of the things that I heard in the sessions that I went to, Georgia and Engage New York. Those were the two that they use their race to the top dollars. Other, other states use their race to the top dollars for other things. Georgia and New York decided to do the curriculum. The reason that they, that the presenters were saying Engage New York was so much better than Georgia was because they have assessments in it. They have all the assessments laid out. They've got the formative, they've got the summative, they've, they've got things for them. And it matches, it just aligns to the Common Core. It just, everything that they've written in their documentation is with the progression documents that take it through the developmental stages of math. So, I guess that's where, when we've talked to teachers, it's, it's the best we have right now. They're, they're out there writing textbooks so that there can be something to purchase. There's not anything like that.
Yeah, and districts, other states are using Engage New York too. One of the ones that Sarah recommended us to look at was Federal Way, Washington. So, we have gotten that information and they have a wonderful resource because it kind of goes along with what New York did. If you use Engage New York and you improve and add things to it, you have to share that. If you use Engage New York and you improve and add things to it, you have to share that too. So we've gotten a lot of information from Federal Way Washington that's helped us in the classrooms. They actually have developed tasks that we haven't gotten to there yet. Because the one thing we have found with this, you know, Saxon maybe took us 45 minutes to an hour a day. This is taking us closer to 90 minutes. It just has more to it.
More needs.
Yeah.
Is that placing a strain on the classroom organization?
It's making an adjustment. There's a real adjustment. And it's, at the first grade level, you know, we're probably not going to do as much science social studies as art, in art. But the wonderful thing about our new reading adoption is you have that built in. There's a lot of science social studies that helped build it in there.
And we don't really have a choice, I mean, we have to...
No.
There's not, it wouldn't matter what curriculum is chosen. It's a new curriculum, the teachers have to spend the time in it, and that's what's taking the time, just learning the new, how do we present it. And so it's what aligns best with Common Core. And it wouldn't matter which tool we use. It's our agreement, I think, that this is the best tool that's out there right now.
And I think it's important to keep in mind that if we stay with Saxon, the supplementation that would have to occur would be much more work than going with something that's more aligned with what we're doing at that force. And that's what's so powerful about the Engage New York curriculum. Also, Willie had a couple of teachers that kind of fiddled with piloting this a little bit last spring, just to kind of fiddle with it.
The fourth grade teachers did, yeah.
We saw some incredible data.
Their scores went way up.
Night and day. It was very evident in the data. And so, you know, this is obviously the right move we're making at this point. Until we do have another adoption cycle, that can come around, and we can work in that context.
The thing we need to do too is we need to get a parent information piece out there as well. We talked about that on Friday during the workshop day. We've investigated having an all group session like in the Hey Gym, to narrowing it down to grade level meetings. We think we like the grade level meeting idea much better. Audience is more intimate, and they can really discuss it with their homeroom teachers much better as far as, you know, Engage New York, the homework aspect, the curriculum aspect, the framework, and everything else. So I'm going to look at the calendar, and that is what I intend to do, is schedule some nighttime grade level meetings for the parents.
What about conferences? Could you take extra time during conferences?
Well, I'll tell you, we ran them in one...
I mean, like an extra day?
Right after the other. I don't know, I really have to look at that, but we're, we just schedule them so tight. It's one parent right after another with every single teacher, so.
We've tried some things with conferences, and we've found that other models have been more effective in trying to... Because parents are so focused on parent-teacher office space. And so, but we have been discussing that. And I think the point is that we need to do some parent outreach. And in fact, remember, remind me tomorrow to send them the link to Engage New York. That's where we only have something tangible for you to look at, it's all online. And so we're going to ask you to spend a little time, just engage with Engage New York. And email me questions that you might have, things that you might, you know, hey, what about this, what about that? Because it's really exciting for me.
We talked about that, I presented to the staff Friday on Engage New York. And there's so much on there. I'm trying to find out the very best entry point for it, to put on the link, the district link, so that parents, if they have any questions, that they can go in and see it. But it's, there's so much that I think if we put them in the wrong place, they will be overwhelmed. So Theresa Tyler and I, who was the other math coach last year, I'm talking with everybody, trying to figure out what's the best entry point. So that's on our agenda too, to try and get that out to the parents. But we need to obviously have that adopted first as the curriculum. And then figure out where's the very best place for them to enter into the information.
Very good, very good. So yeah, so what we need from the board tonight is to approve this program. I'm a former math teacher myself, I love their aspect of it. It's a very, very powerful program. And the alignment to the Common Core is very correct.
And it's something for, so we adopt the new math curriculum?
Yes. It's going to help bridge that gap between what we adopted before Common Core came about. What we adopted with Saxon was on the old standards. And now, you know, we adopted, then we had Common Core coming, and we went, oh my, how do we bridge that gap? Well, this is the answer, the best answer we've got.
Why don't we approve the...
Engage New York.
Engage New York as a math, what's on the...
Curriculum.
That we approve that curriculum adoption request as presented. And without thanks, that's my work.
It is, but it's exciting to see at first grade what they're able to do. We had our first mid-module assessment, and I was like, well, I'd read it to Mr. Gallagher. And I go, this is what they're asking the first graders. I mean, and it's just, it's Common Core, it's what they're going to see, but at a first grade level, when they take that smarter balance. But it's more than just preparing them for a test, it's just making them better math students. Asking them to think.
Well, I'm very proud, I'm very proud of my staff, you know, they have a brand new Language Arts adoption this year, they're warning, and then they're wearing this too, and it's, my hat's off to all of them for doing this.
When we heard about it last year, I came back and talked to Katie about it, and I go, we'd be doing two new curriculums. But she goes, it's what's best for kids, I mean, we've just got to do it.
So what do we do for tests? How does that... It's all online, you photocopy it.
Or sheets, everything. Photocopies, and worksheets, and yeah.
It's still got to be...
Can't be two hundred thousand of them.
No, huge.
No, no.
Tiny.
No, the print bill was not two hundred thousand. It was up there, but it was not...
Just let us know if there's anything else. As you're going, if you find there's some other needs, keep us...
Appreciate that.
Because I will, I think we're just at those stages where, yeah, we have to do it. We expect our kids to come along with Common Core. We've got to provide that for them, and Saxon doesn't.
Is it possible to visit the classroom and see this in action?
Come on down.
Okay, okay, you tell me when a good time is.
Yeah, call me up, just call me up, Desi, and I'll log you in.
All right.
Okay.
That really would be a great idea.
All board members, not just Desi, all board members are welcome, so. Come down and see us.
Thanks.
It really is impressive.
Well, second to motion. The motion has been, it's on the floor on the table. The motion has been made, I think, to approve the adoption of the Engage New York curriculum. Any other discussion? So with that, all was in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. You guys get a chance, get on and Google it, and walk your way through it. All right.
I'm not going to be able to answer this question though, because I've been doing those sample questions in the paper.
First grade, you could probably handle the first grade. I look at the upper grades, I think, I'm glad I teach these.
Thanks for your support. Thank you.
See you. I guess the other thing we could do is we have nine eleven board member appointment. We have two letters of interest, and both of those individuals are here, so maybe we could just move them up so they don't have to... Although if they want to be board members, maybe we should turn them up.
No, this is probably a good one too.
Yes, Mr. Chair, you have two individuals here, Kirk Quinnlin, who's submitted letter of interest, and Annie Moon, who's also submitted a letter of interest. Pete and I have met before, as per our procedures. And they're here to answer any questions you may have. Board policy recommends that any board appointments are, I think, done in like 30 days or so. It's really up to the board in terms of who do you want to appoint, and who do you want to appoint to the position that was vacated by Rebecca.
Thank you for your letters, by the way. Thanks.
Do you have any questions?
Sure, I have a question. So I was looking at the employment history provided to us, and I saw this goats.
Is it you?
Is it me?
Yeah.
Oh. My sheep.
We both have chickens.
Yeah. We both have, I refer to it as a nano ranch, I would include, you're like a nano ranch, it's pretty cool.
No, my parents had close to 300 goats, and they were contracting in, and they had close to 500 goats, and they were doing weed removal, vegetative management. So I got to travel around Malibu, and the Getty Center, and Nevada, and Idaho, and I heard goats, and I lived in a trailer. I don't even like camping, to be honest with you.
That was it, I thought you'd have a more interesting question about those goats.
That's the only job really out of the box, most of the, all the other jobs are kid-related.
Yeah, I noticed, it was a variety, that was a variety in job, that was a variety of job. I saw all the kid jobs, I guess, I saw all the kid jobs.
Well, and the fire thing, so, but those had power tools connected to them. I guess that's the tie there, chainsaw.
Do you have any other discussion?
The only thing I can think of is maybe the board wants to give each candidate a moment to kind of present a little bit about themselves. And you have some dialogue, and that could get a board...
I prefer pitch, don't you?
Probably ladies first.
Ladies first.
Oh, gee. Shall I stand up?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. So I grew up here, was born and raised here in Lake County. I graduated in 1980. It's gone for about 14 years. Well, I worked at DHS for a brief time, for about seven months, but I told Charlie if I worked there any longer, I wouldn't have kids myself, so I let that job go. And we lived in the Bay Area for almost eight years. It was just too hard to have both of us working and living the rat race. So we came here two years ago to raise our son, and he is attending Union kindergarten this year. And I just got passionate about wanting to be involved. I have a master's in health education, and I want to address food, and I know that I've taught this a couple of times, but I would just, I would love to see more staff, and new staff, and, you know, and I love Randy Derry dearly. But the poor man has come out of retirement. I mean, I had fourth grade flute lessons with him, and so, you know, just fresh. And I want to bring something fresh to the table, and I'm excited to watch the kinders grow. And, you know, when I was talking to Pete this morning about, I'll actually see the effects of it. He'll come home and share, you know, what's going on in school, and hopefully I can help make a difference and influence the younger kids and their path towards, you know, I heard you basically have seniors, so in that, in that route, carry on the way. That's my pitch.
Any questions?
No, I appreciate your passion. I think this is hard, hard to make an appointment. When people want to volunteer and help, it, so I appreciate the fact that you both are interested. That's very encouraging.
Well, I'm Kirk Quinnlin. I am, I'm not from here, I'm a transplant in. My wife and I just celebrated our four-year anniversary here in Lakeview this summer, and it's been an amazing move for us. This is probably the most home-like town we have ever experienced in our marriage. And I feel more at home here than when I go home to see my family. It's a spectacular community. And for me, honestly, I'm just kind of a see any, fill any kind of person. And so I knew there was a seat available, and I love to serve our community at whatever level I can inside of just being a part of things. I think that my career as a minister here in town lends me different opportunities to serve, you know, spiritually, religiously, things like that. And I think that sometimes pastors get a bad rap for not caring about educational needs of young people. I think oftentimes we like to bicker about things that are sometimes very silly. And so I think, I try to tend to be the least religious preacher that people have ever met, and that's kind of part of my goal. And so I would like to have an opportunity to serve our community on a different level. I mean, I'm a very pro-teacher kind of guy, because I'm married to one, I have to be one, or things go badly at home, you know. And so, and the, you know, it's one of those, it's one of those things that, in the realm of education, I have been exposed to a lot of different models, just because of where my wife has been, and what I've kind of absorbed through her experiences. And it's been spectacular to be able to grow in those levels. I'm excited, because I'll be starting my master's degree in the next fall, which I'm really, really excited about. And that's actually, most likely, we're still a little flux, most likely going to be in a counseling field, a secular counseling field. So just adding tools to the toolbox, and how to help people, and how to serve well. Completed my EMT training last year, and that's been a great way to serve as well. But that's just not an avenue I can be a part of right this second. And so I'd really like to be able to serve, so that's my pitch, that's where I'm at. And honestly, you'd probably be awesome. I'm not trying to compete against her at all, I didn't even know there was another letter, so I will not be irritated if I'm not the one selected. But I do love serving. Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize.
So you said, I'm not from here, so where are you?
Oh, kind of all over, to be really honest with you. I'm from Florida originally. I did most of my growing up, and first sent in university in Missouri, southern Missouri, around Springfield. And then I spent most of my ministry career in Colorado. Did my theological training outside of Portland. And my wife and I got married in Newburgh, she graduated from George Fox. And so I got to audit classes at George Fox, and then test out of them at my school. So it was really, it was really better education for a lot less money. And it was really a great, great way to go. So yeah, that's where we're from, so around all over the place. I also lived in Romania. I served in a hospital in Romania for a little less than a year. I lived in Canada and served with a homeless ministry in Canada for a short period of time. So when I say kind of from all over, kind of from all over. And so when I say I finally found a home, it's been, that's actually pretty dramatic for me to say, so, yeah.
Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
I have a question.
Oh, yeah, my son will be into the garden next year, yeah, sorry, yeah.
It's good to have two candidates that are interested.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, I mean, I guess my recommendation at this point is, I appreciate the fact that you're interested. We haven't really had an opportunity to dialogue. I mean, it's kind of tough to make a presentation, and none of us have discussed it.
Absolutely.
And so I don't see that the need has to be filled tonight. We'd like to fill it in the near future, in the next meeting or so. So I would recommend we table the decision, and have an opinion dialogue, and then maybe on that meeting, we can make a decision.
Wonderful.
And you guys?
Oh, spectacular.
We don't need to jump into that chair tonight.
Yeah, that gives one of us a whole month before we have to jump into the chair, which is really nice, so.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much for coming today, so.
Thank you.
We moved you up, so you can...
We're the one who just said if you want Ben.
Oh.
I got a pack, go to Ben tomorrow.
Well, you've got time for it.
Yes, I'm going to go tuck him in, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, we are at night one, achievement complex.
Yes, Mr. Chair, achievement complex, part of the Oregon Education Investment Board Initiative. Every year, it needs to be approved, and every year it's changed. And so you're used to seeing kind of colored spreadsheet. Now it's kind of a dull and bland report that says submission, maintenance, OD, district site, and a bunch of numbers in it. If you really want to know the true story, is look at the colored inserts, it's called the technical manual. And it talks about the definition... And it talks about the definition of the four-year graduation rate, five-year, five-year completer, post-secondary enrollment, all those sorts of things. Now, let's talk about the impact of Achievement Compacts. Achievement Compacts were first created as an accountability tool for districts. And I remember you, if you remember Dr. Rudy Prue coming in as the Chief Education Officer, the first one for the entire state of Oregon. And he came in and took those Achievement Compacts and shook his finger down at all of these districts statewide and said, "You guys are doing a poor job of blah, 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 blah." Well, that was never the intent of Achievement Compacts. And Oregon Education Investment Board has had some conversations since that has rejuvenized, rejuvenated why they have Achievement Compacts. And the main purpose at this point that they've decided on is that it's to drive legislative decisions. Legislative decisions that will impact four-year graduation rates, five-year completer rates. It'll impact how many dual credits that students are earning statewide. It'll impact, um, post-secondary enrollment. What percentage of students are graduating from high school in Oregon and enrolling in a higher education institution? It's gonna drive policy in regards to the early childhood learning with the kinder assessment data that they're looking at. You know, um, it's gonna drive legislation in terms of third grade reading proficiency, fifth grade math proficiency, sixth grade non-chronically absent. Um, that is kind of controversial one, but they, there is some research that connects the absenteeism rate of sixth graders to how they do in the next leg of their educational setting, which is the secondary level.
Isn't that more broadly absenteeism and performance?
Yes, yeah. And that's something they've been looking at statewide in terms of the absenteeism rate. Not just the absenteeism rate of students that are unexcused. They're talking when you're not in a classroom, even if it's an excused school activity. They're looking at all those impacts. And so there happen a lot of discussions now. I know that we've talked a little bit about the instructional calendar year and how many minutes and hours of instruction our students are getting. Well, there's a lot of key discussions going on at the state level. In fact, I'm facilitating some of those discussions in Medford this next Friday. I mean, in terms of the instructional calendar. And I think we're gonna see some legislation come out in regards to that this next legislative session, because the whole state is looking at this. And when Oregon got such a major black eye of being the second lowest graduation rate in the nation in terms of recording, uh, states, I think it's an awareness point for the state. You know, we're an oasis in our school district in comparison to the state average and that, that nationwide comparison, but still, it was an eye opener. So that's how Achievement Compacts are being used. Now what's required on our end is that our administrative team takes the, the pre-generated data from the state and they take a look at their students, where each grade level is at in terms of those deficiencies, and they set what is called realistic goals. With the understanding that each class is kind of cyclic. You may have a strong group of second graders this year in reading, but maybe next year's second graders aren't quite as strong. And so it allows the building principals to set Achievement Compact, Compact goals that vary based upon where each class they're standing in. Which creates more, much more of a realistic data sense for Oregon Education Investment Board at the state level, so they can use that again to drive policy-type decisions. So, the other piece of, of the achievement compacts is we have to engage teachers. And so you can see the, the meeting notes there. Uh, we had our meeting. Uh, you can see who LOEA chose to represent. You can see who was present, who wasn't. Um, we had our meeting. We discussed everything in depth. Um, I was very proud of, of the administrators and everybody who contributed to the achievement compact, um, data report. And so we bring this to you for approval tonight. And of course we have Steve and Jesse and Will here if you have any questions you would like to ask specifically of the data and why they chose to represent.
So, so these goals and these numbers are different than the individual ones you do with each teacher for the S B two ninety?
Correct.
And how often does this committee meet?
We meet once in spring and then once in the fall, right before we bring the recommendation. This achievement compact submission is due this Wednesday.
So this is a summary.
This is summary.
How much time do you take to do this? Is this something that you have information with all the other stuff that you do that is easy to extrapolate?
No, I use Oak's data. I use Easy C B M data. Of course, with the sixth grade thing, I use attendance data of this, what was last year's fifth grade coming into sixth grade this year to, to make my determination, so. It, it's not a cumbersome process. We're just looking at the data we have and forecasting is all we're doing, so.
Okay. Same?
Same. Yeah, we just, we sit down with Susan. She pulls data off the L B L. We're lucky, we have the luxury election instead of small classes and we can, we can get it right down to the kid. So, no, it's, it really isn't that bad.
And this is Oregon Department of Education requiring it through, through O E I B board?
Through Oregon Education Investment Board, yes.
It just seems like you guys are constantly in meetings providing information to the state that.
But we, we do, uh, both Will and I built our, our administrative goals around these things, the achievement compact.
So it had a tie into that or something?
I took the ninth grade, uh, I took the ninth grade on track and Will took, I think, an absentee.
Yeah.
As a.
Okay, okay. Well, that makes me feel better.
Which one was chalkboard project, Senate Bill two ninety work sessions and then as, you know, as administrators, it's pretty broad as far as what we reach out to set as goals in our building and then came out a chalkboard project for us. The recommendation was build our specific goals based on these achievement compact.
Perfect, okay. And two meetings a year, isn't it? And they're here?
No, it's not exhausted. Like I said, they're integrating in their own goal development. So there's some meaningful data there. I appreciate O E I B reevaluating the purpose because it's a much better purpose now than what it was before and can be used as a tool to.
Not a club.
It's not a club, no.
It shouldn't be a club.
It shouldn't be, and that was never, I would think, ever the intention.
So how are, are they, do they lobby? Maybe they, how do they, how do they differ from O S B A than if, if it's a legislative?
Good question. O E I B, and I would encourage you to Google it if you'd like a lot of detailed information. But O E I B was formulated through, oh, two legislative sessions before. And it was mainly formulated around school improvement and the studying of certain data points, um, for legislative-driven type purposes. And so it, O E I B had a significant impact on school funding for this current pandemic effect. And because a lot of data pointed to that, hey, schools have been underfunded for a long time. And so they were able to pull this data and say, look, we, we're, look where we are with our graduation rate. We've got to provide resources out there for the schools to be able to utilize to get that rate up.
Do you think, do you think this legislative session is gonna actually bite on that?
I'm hoping. They did last this, this current, something, they did. And they actually used this data along with all the education model reports, as well as some other data sources that they're reaching to. But O E I B, in my opinion, has been providing a good service in terms of that regards and providing definitive data that's hard to argue. It gets, it gets, the need is definitely there.
Well, I appreciate that we can use it for the other. Again, I, again, I just get those.
Oh, no, I, we, we understand. We, we certainly empathize with your, with your stance.
Okay, so do we have to approve?
The motion to.
Approve yet?
So the motion to.
Motion to approve the achievement compact.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve the achievement compact as presented.
All second.
There is looking by virtue.
I'm trying to mix it up.
All right, so the motion's been made and seconded to approve Achievement Compacts as recommended by the committee. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we gonna use it for legislative tools? Why didn't they just say that?
Uh, good question. I don't know. It got kind of convoluted. I think they're got their, when O E I B was first formulated, everybody used it as a platform to promote their own political stance on things. So, but was originally, I think, intended to be something kind of focused in this large, became something this large and then it became, gee, how we manage this. And that's when it started to be using as a club, like you're talking about, and then it's not been working, so they reevaluated it. It's back to where it should be and I think was intended to be original.
But our club guys do it long.
Yes, yes. Yeah, if you like that, easy, easy to do.
Who wouldn't want to be on the team?
That's right. It's right. It's an exciting group, sort of like, easy, easy to do.
All right. Union Board, maybe. Take this special.
Uh, Mr. Chair, Mr. Cahill informs me that, you know, choose any date you want to go out to Union. We usually do that once or twice a year. So it's really up to you. Then you wanna be out there before the snow flies, then you wanna be out there while the snow's flying. It's really up to you guys in terms of what you'd like to do. So you see your calendar in front of you, your proposed forming dates. Uh, the red, uh, cells are quarterly work sessions. Wait, hold a work session out there if you'd like. It's really up to you.
Is there any date that works better for Union than?
Aye, that's, I've talked to Susan. It's wait, open Stephanie. And the date you guys want, we'll schedule it.
Is there anything that would particularly concern Union that having a meeting out there would facilitate having people?
I don't think so. The ones, I, the one thing of interest, they developed a playground committee out there. Maybe they might, they might wanna do a presentation.
And I would think we'd want to tour the new library.
Yes, good point. Thank you for remembering that. The parents jumped in and, uh, decorated, remodded, put in a beautiful new library in that building. I think that's, that's worth bragging about. That's worth seeing, so. Is there any way we can take a peek at one of the teacher's? Teacher's?
Sure, yeah.
I mean, I've never.
We'll put you in bunny suits and make sure, no, just kidding. But yes, I think we could.
Yeah, it's cool to see. We talked about opportunities and updates and stuff and I've never really seen inside one of those.
Yeah. So maybe we can start the work session early enough. You can see the teacherage, you can see the library, maybe a little bit of playground.
Yeah, but they haven't toured around, so.
Yeah.
So is the twenty-seventh too soon or do you wanna do it seventeenth? Gets a little close to.
Anytime is fine. New structures at the end of the gymnasium?
Yes, we have a new structure in gymnasium.
You pick. We'll do it.
Well, twenty-seventh is two weeks. It's a work session. I don't know if that matters, to have a work session out there or.
Well, it, we're probably gonna need word being that early. I don't think it can solely be a work session.
I mean, it doesn't matter. I don't think it just.
But we could easily have a work session slash word being out there.
And I think the time changes like the first weekend of November, so then we won't be able to see playground if you want. Okay? Twenty-seventh, we have one meeting November, December, January.
We're jumping right on.
Yeah, we have one meeting November, December, January.
So maybe the twenty-seventh would be it then.
Two weeks from now, aye?
Yeah.
Okay, we got, oh, Susan or mine. What time, what time on the work session?
At least six, it could even be sooner. Depends on what items we have left, so.
Okay.
We'll try and, we'll be in contact real quick.
And have Susan and I there so we can tour you around through the facility?
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha. Okay. Ken?
Thank you.
All right. Coaching hire approval.
Mr. Hamilton?
Um, yeah, just the approval in front of you guys to recommend Jamie Anderson for the head boys basketball job. Jamie is, uh, he formerly coached our girls team, I think in oh-eight, oh-nine, somewhere in there. Um, went back to school about his teaching credentials and is now back in the area and is one of our substitutes and, uh, I think he's the right guy for the job, good fit. I'm really excited to have him.
So where you're coaching, where, where, where did he coach high school?
Where did he coach high school? Here. For a year. He coached our girls here for a while, for, before I got here. He was a. Yeah, he was assistant, uh, boys. Years prior to that and then took, my first year I hired Jamie for the head boys.
So he hasn't taught, he hasn't coached anywhere else but here?
I don't. He coached at Grant, didn't he coach at Grant?
I'm just gonna mention his experience here, but I.
I thought there was something in Western Fu, wasn't there, when he was getting his degree? No?
No, his coaching, he has several years coaching. I mean, he coached the boys here, I mean, the, the head coach, the girls here and then assisted with the boys teams.
That's, that's the experience here first. Okay. Just so I get asked.
Okay. Any other discussion? And can the motion to approve? I would approve Mr. uh, Mr. Anderson. Was it head, head varsity boys basketball?
That's actually a important question to ask in case there's any conflict or interest, so.
I don't know what this guy looks like, but for some reason.
Maybe you should clarify that we're gonna approve Jamie Anderson, not Mr. Anderson. So the motion's been made and seconded. All right. Motion's been made to approve the coaching recommendation for the head up. Coach Jamie Anderson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right.
Thank you.
Yes. Can we move real quick? Okay.
Did you have another one that's.
That was coming later in the.
Okay. Okay, uh, E S D budget committee assignment.
Yes, E S D budget committee assignment. Uh, let's see. Go ahead.
Okay, so the position that was previously held by Mr. Schrader expired on six thirty, so we just need to appoint another board member to that position. Um, it was a three-year term. Mr. Gallagher's continues till two thousand seventeen, so this is a separate one from that. And we try to have two people on that committee at all times. So we either can extend Pete or we can.
Or we can, um, appoint someone new, whatever you guys would like to do. Is this like our budget where you meet just a few times before that budget is approved and then?
I think they've gotten to have them twice a year.
I'm glad you showed the interest.
No. I was trying to go now, but it would not take very much of a time.
They deserve paisley, so we travel paisley. They usually provide dinner.
It's a wonderful experience. Here's all the E S D board.
Oh, boy. Let me Google it.
I know I run it, the list.
Everybody's a million dollar.
Yeah, it's a million dollar floor, budget, yeah.
I'll flip before they reach that money.
Three years, fourteen?
Yeah.
There's got three years left on your term. We have a vice chair option, so it's a, that's another option.
Do we have to do this tonight?
Yep.
He has already expired, so they probably would like this. Oh, if you, if you don't appoint before it expires, you're just automatically re-upped.
Nope, I talked to him about that recently. They really don't want me back.
Well, considering we have that, why don't we?
Desi will do it.
Desi will do it.
Okay, here's the board, here's the board members for the ESD. Jeanette Grant, Zone 1, Dale Kiano, Zone 2, John Griffin, Zone 3, Clayton Sharp, Zone 4, Vicki Taylor, Zone 5, Bob Pardee at large, and Leslie Arcelarius at large. Seven members? Which is good, because for a long time, they only had, they only had like five or six that were...
Yeah, we didn't have a full board.
Yeah, a full board, yeah, now they have a full board.
I'm, I'm just a little concerned with my time.
All right, Darryl.
Good job, Darryl.
Darryl.
Good.
But I only do it on like terms of...
You want to do it?
We'll re-up the new year. All right.
You guys are both go. It's too bad you can't have two people.
Desi wants to do it, that's fine.
It's between you guys, I just can't, I can't come up to another committee.
You want to do it?
Sure, I'll do it.
Well, now they're fighting over it.
It's the first, it's a good thing it's on camera.
All right.
It's been a motion approved.
It's been a motion to...
I move before it changes their minds that Desi be appointed to the Budget Committee for the ESD position.
So the motion's been made, seconded to appoint Desi as our ESD Budget Committee appointee. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right.
And thank you.
Thanks, Desi.
Yeah, thank you.
And, and...
Thanks.
Desi, Desi, wait until we do that.
Well, it's the vice chair trade-off.
All right, computer use forms.
And we still have negotiations.
Yes, Mr. Chair, attached to find an existing work policy, GPP slash IIBGA dash AR2. Quite the mouthful there. It covers the Student Network Access Request Form for Internet. And the draft document that is also attached, it has proposed updates. And the AR stands for Administrative Rules, and this is the form that goes out to be signed. The policy recommended changes are highlighted in yellow, and this comes from our district technology coordinator at Grease. He's just trying to keep the form updated and current. And also, I looked at it and I didn't see anything that looked out of place, looked accurate to me, and so we're bringing it to the board for approval.
Have we had a class of whatever, just for ease of identification, rather than trying to figure out who they are and the other...
Yes.
I move we approve the amended forms as presented.
Okay. Motion's been made, approved, is there a second?
Breden?
Motion's been made, seconded, approved, approved, used from the presented. All those in favor, say aye? Anyone opposed? Motion carries, number 96, number 97. Extra paid.
Yes, Mr. Chair, what you have in front of you is something that we had to, to put in place sooner than later, and we couldn't wait for board approval. It has a lot to do with that extra position the board approved for the secondary level. And Steve, you probably have more details on this than I do.
Yeah.
But it's a matter of just making things work, and so I'll let you kind of take it from there.
When we, when we interviewed Fred, we were impressed with his, he's already, you know, he's economic development here. Met a lot of the business leaders, a lot of people in the community, in the business, in the industry, and really wanted him to kind of head up, take over our work program, because he's already made all those contacts. And so, we started the school year with him having work program first period. And kids would, would meet with him during that time or throughout the day. And he was placing kids in jobs and meeting with them, going out to businesses during that time. Then we discovered, we had, we had like forty-seven kids in social studies with one teacher. So, we had, we took a intro to business away from Danae and added another section of social studies, because she's social studies endorsed. And Fred, as I mentioned, when we, we hired him, he has areas of expertise in all the CTE, including business. So we added Fred, the intro to business, which is first period, and then moved work program to basically an eighth period. And it's actually a better time to have work program, because school's out, kids can meet with him, he can go out, you know, and not worry about coming rushing back to class.
No rush.
Yeah. I see it probably being a semester that way. And maybe we're, we're coming up with maybe more of an extra duty contract for that, much like a coach after school. But this bought us, this bought us a semester. And we could review and kind of look at, see where we're at in the end of January, if we are able to add additional staff or what the master schedule's going to look like.
How many kids are in the work program?
He's got over twenty.
That are all placed in the...
Yeah.
Drives.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
That is quite the load, I mean, that's a lot for him to go out and develop, but it's really good work experience for kids. I've personally heard from a lot of the parents that their children are involved with this, and they're just, wow, this is tremendous, so.
Oh, yeah.
Just, have you had that in the past?
Yeah.
Like, just thought of that.
Mr. Nash, myself, Lonnie, have kind of headed that up. Been nice, because he's just taken it to a different level.
And was Danae, did she already have some social studies?
Yeah.
So she's, it didn't have prep, she's...
Right, right. We had, we had to just change a prep with Mr. Smith back and split that class, basically.
Awesome. She...
So? Were the charge paid for Fred for eighth period, still seven?
I think it's the way he gets, because social studies, that was, that's...
Yeah.
And that's, she was lucky. I went to bed. And then...
People working out.
Well, they should do hot yoga in here, because it's very warm in here, that'd be good.
They use this as a sun that they work in. So we need to make enough of a motion to approve the extra paid coverage for Mr. Smith.
Yeah. And it has to be in addition to the FTE at this point, because we don't have any negotiation, we need an extra duty contract. That would be a whole other process. Like Steve said, if we feel this is going to be continued, this man will probably go down that road, but for now, this is what we have to do.
Twenty kids, I mean, that's awesome.
All movement, we approve the extra duty contract that was presented by Mr. Prock for Mr. Smith on the work program.
I'll second this extra period coverage.
All right, so how do we look at the motion? Is it extra duty, or it's just extra?
It's an extra period coverage.
Extra period?
Yes.
So the motion is actually extra.
Extra period, period.
You can add that in, in second, so all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. All right.
With our thanks to Mr. Smith, because that's a, that can make a long day.
Yeah.
I didn't get a chance to talk to him, so would you tell him, thank you?
So you didn't, you didn't have gray hair when you started.
I did, I would.
All right, seismic grant application.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'm really excited about this. We're hoping for grant funding for DMS Southwing. The total grant is for $467,710. And the benefit cost analysis score is .948, which is very high, which gives us a high likelihood of attracting these grant dollars. I've worked with Anderson Engineering to ensure that the numbers have been inflated to current costs to prevent any kind of overages. We're not anticipating any kind of the asbestos issues we had with the DMS Northwing, and we actually have plans with the DMS Southwing. So we know what we're getting into versus what the Northwing is always a mystery. This is to take care of the DMS Southwing that has been rated as a collapse rating of very high by FEMA. And the Southwing, and the auditorium was constructed in 1935, the band choir addition added in 1950, just kind of give you an idea of the age. And if it's any kind of benefit, as it has been to the Northwing, as well as Fremont and LHS, it's going to add more years of life onto this particular facility. To actually replace this facility would cost the district around 3.8 million with earth value, just to kind of as a cost comparison there. And so I'm recommending that we, that you approve the grant application for the DMS Southwing seismic grant.
Any questions?
Yeah, so this is going to be, the sheer wall kind of, as a red, that's your wall discussion. It's going to be aligned, share with the discoveries, down, down the foundation stuff as well.
Yeah, this is a wood stud building.
A what?
A wood stud building.
What does that mean to...
Built out of wood studs every, spaced every 24, 16 inches.
Oh, okay.
It's a wood frame building, so...
As opposed to?
Brick building.
Right.
So it's lighter, a little more flexible?
A little more flexible and easier to fit.
Oh, okay, so then, then the sheer walls likely to have even better, probably, looking for, okay. So what kind of foundation do they got here?
Concrete, no wood.
Concrete, yeah, actual poured concrete as opposed to rubble?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think the point is that it's much easier to retrofit seismic versus the DMS Northwing, brick buildings, double walls around the foundation, much more difficult.
Most of the auditorium's planned to be outside, outside building, just stiffened up, not inside.
Oh, really?
And then the band room is, is in sheer walls. So they're lighter, so they're easier to...
The gymnasium covered in the last go-round, or what?
The upper court gymnasium, or the auditorium.
Oh, we call that the auditorium, right?
Yeah, the auditorium was covered in the last go-round when we dropped it, remember?
Yeah.
And so was the band room. So those will be cropped, so we got those back here.
Roof, is it missing? Do we need a new roof on auditorium?
We got a new roof on DMS Northwing, because we had to actually lift the roof structure up and install some infrastructure to reinforce it. I don't think that's in the plan of the auditorium, though, is it?
No, we're doing all the auditorium from the outside, stiffening the walls from the outside.
Do we need a new roof on that auditorium?
Yes.
Yeah, we probably do. The auditorium's probably not as bad as some parts of the Southwing.
Right.
The auditorium is not an expensive roof.
So would it be less expensive to do it at the same time as this seismic?
Probably. Could probably get a new plant, but it would work in the front.
So that's probably something we should think about.
Not bad, I do.
But we can address that, we need to get approved for the grant first.
Right, right.
We have to apply for the grant.
If we get the grant, I think that's a great option we should look at.
Yeah.
So we need to have a motion if we want to do forward this grant.
Are we recovered?
I recommend that we approve the seismic grant as presented for the Southwing of DMS.
I just have memories of our last...
It was beautiful.
Big lineup, this was...
Beautiful.
Big job.
What could possibly go wrong?
I know.
They got plans.
When, when was the construction?
I think we got a schedule for this next summer.
Yeah.
I think the grant awards are in this summer, I think.
Yeah.
I don't know that we can't not do it, but, okay.
One of the keys is to try to keep the grant in construction, because the boss, the boss, the room, we lost it last time, is there was too much of a gap, right? And that kind of... Well, there was, yeah, there was a wee...
That didn't happen.
But part of it was the, the, that the plans were, so you had, there was a lot of peak and peak, peaking.
The building was a little more complicated.
Yeah.
And it takes, brick is heavy.
And this construction will coincide with solar farm?
You have to.
Construction?
Yeah.
I mean, so what are our options? We have a building that's designated high likelihood by FEMA, so our option is to... It's just timing? I mean, we apply for the grant, we might not get it, we apply again, we...
Right.
I don't see that we can't not apply, because the building that might collapse on people. Would you want money?
And to me, that's the main, that would just be project security.
Don't they want money, is that what you just said?
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Yeah, the free grant money.
Oh, no.
Free.
And there's like, free about, all right, I stuck with the motion.
All right. Motion's been made, seconded to approve the seismic grant application. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. All right, and so Darryl stayed from the vote, can speak for the application.
Yeah. Refreshing, right?
Middle school volleyball program.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'll turn this over to Mr. Hamilton, Mr. Hamilton, Mr. President, but I've got to say that... I've got to say this is a pretty exciting program to be able to bring this back. It was a little bit last minute, but it was an opportunity that you could pass up, so Jesse, why don't you start, and then Janet can follow up the budget.
Okay, so, in front of you, you'll see a recommendation to bring back middle school volleyball. In the last, Clement County School District are bringing back their, their middle school volleyball programs. And I've been in contact with the district athletic director over there, and he was generous enough to put us in their schedule. And that's one of the big reasons, I understand from the beginning, why it was eliminated, was just nowhere, no one to play. And so what this did is it created, there's two teams, about ten teams in the basin, and he put us in that schedule. And so volleyball's one of the sports that, you know, in this community, they've done just a fantastic job of picking up the pieces from us not being able to offer middle school sports through EBL, through Pop Warner, and all these various community sponsored activities. Volleyball's one that just kind of, for whatever reason, doesn't, doesn't go well. And the opportunity really isn't there, so I saw it as a great opportunity for us to get back into that and provide that to some of these volleyball kids. We helped sign up, so we had over twenty-five girls sign up between seventh and eighth grade for these teams. And they put us in the tournament, actually gave her, excuse me, into the schedule and gave us six home dates. So they've been coming over and playing, and, and will be traveling, they had five, five away dates and then two tournaments over in Clement, they're all in Clement. So what we're, what I'm looking to do is, is bring that back for just the transportation cost for this year, for their seven away trips. And then get, we got four coaches that are volunteering, and that, that's going to be the only cost for this year. And then next year, I would like to be able to bring it back fully with, with the transportation, stifens for, for two coaches, and then also for referees. We have volunteers refereeing right now, and I work closely with Janet on, on some of the numbers. Do you want to add anything to that? You can see the breakdown of the, of the numbers that we used on the back of, on page sixty-eight there. So the grant total this year for just the transportation for those contests would be about fifty-four hundred dollars, fifty-four thirty-one. And then next year, adding in a stipend, split between two coaches, and also referees, be about eighty-one... would be about $88,000.
Oh, not too much.
I just think it's a great opportunity to get these, you know, there's so many kids involved in it, and it gets, you know, we have all those activities available for high school, and it's nice to have those school sponsored activities for our middle schoolers. I think this is kind of, Clement County bringing that back really helped us, in my opinion, for scheduling purposes. And now that, that's not an issue anymore with the schedule, so.
And then also, I'm sure you're able to, all the home dates, we can even have a gate fee or charge at the gate for them also, so.
The high school gym?
No, they're, they're at a union right now.
Oh.
And part of the, you know, like Sean said, it came really late. We didn't know we were even going to be in their schedule until like middle of September.
So they didn't get back to you because?
Well, no, they just didn't have, he didn't create the schedule. We talked and he said, yes, I'm going to, I'm going to do my, you know, and he just hadn't created it yet. And so we found out we were in it around September 15th, 16th, I think, and the next term, it was a week and a half later. So we really had to, and I think that, you know, next year, having that, that's, you know, we know we're there and can plan a little bit better on that. So it came to get really fast, so.
Now I had Janet look at the budget, what the budget's standing on this, if you know if you're going to some recommendations.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, we, we kind of fluff the athletic one anyway because we anticipate every single team to make a state playoff spot. You know, that's always maybe not necessarily true for every single team, so we do have a little bit of fluff there. And then looking at it, I mean, I think we can sort of those cost, those transportation costs this year and then better prepare for next year as we know it will be coming.
I'm very excited about that, that's awesome.
All right.
So you're going to make the motion?
Yeah, I am going to throw out one thing, though, with 25 girls, we need a volleyball net down at the elementary school, because that's too many to practice at DMS.
They're not, they're, they're about practicing together. They're split, one's going right after school, one's going at 5:30, so they've balanced it.
I know, I'm just saying from my experience, that's really hard. So I would, whatever, just to keep it in your mind of, as we're doing, because.
How can we get in the budgeting process with a look? See how much it will cost to put those stanchions down?
Mr. Cloud or Porter?
I totally agree with you.
And we checked and it's already on the maintenance quest list, so it's in the works.
I just, I know that it's, and you might have it from where else? Because they don't have to wait to practice, so, good job, that's awesome. That'd make a huge difference in your seismic team, too.
Did we, did we have to offer something for the boys?
I don't believe this would be a Title IX issue because of, because the boys at the middle school have the Pop Warner football. So actually, anything that's been added from lines because we haven't, that's anything with the group. So this is actually a good.
We don't sponsor Pop Warner.
No, I was going to say.
No, we don't, but it's available for them to participate.
We provide the fields, I mean, you could, you could make the argument that they're even. I mean, we approved the middle school volleyball program, great thanks.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the middle school volleyball program. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Middle school volleyball program, all right, thanks.
And we don't have to travel down to, where did we go in Nevada that year?
Girl.
Stop and see Brunel in the casino. Brunel's cafe. Yeah, Brunel's the air station.
That was a, that was a trip.
So classifieds at that retirement.
I've been to Brunel more than once, yeah.
Mr. Chair, I've already accepted Sharon Cobian's letter of resignation, but what the board has to approve is for retirement. And so that's what's in front of you to approve tonight is the retirement of Sharon Cobian. And she's given the date there that she wants to retire. And she's had a longstanding tenure with this district and has been a tremendous asset for our district.
Is there a motion to accept her letter of retirement?
With regret, but what, does it, I mean, is it just a matter of form? If there's no, this is.
Yeah, it's just approving her retirement.
Paul, would we approve the retirement of Sharon, Sharon Cobian as a, was she the head cook?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Head cook with regrets. And with my compliments, she wrote a very well letter, much better structured than many of our certified staff.
With that, thanks too to offer to help with training, because I know that's a lot with all the new regulations.
Yeah, hopefully we can get somebody on board and have a full shadow. Is there a second?
I second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the retirement letter for Sharon Cobian with appreciation and regrets that she would be written on before her retirement. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. We are at 9.12.
Rebecca, can you help us remember to do something for her in December, January? In appreciation, yeah, I mean, that, because she's been along.
Maybe break or something.
You don't mean a break or anything. I'd be happy to if I had that kind of skill, but.
You would?
Yeah, you don't want, we don't want to do that.
Especially your team. Ugh, you're really. All right, we need to elect the vice chair. I can't do it.
So what is the consent agenda? So it's just a filling for you if you're not here?
Yep.
And you're done going to Germany?
For what?
Until next year.
So what is it?
You're interested. Okay, good to hear it.
It's pretty.
That's kind of.
Pretty straightforward.
Okay, do you want to do it, Darryl? You've done it before. All right, it gives me a chance to win.
That's right. All right. Stephanie has eagerly volunteered.
Eagerly, we heard it, eagerly.
Vice chair. So is there a motion?
I recommend Stephanie Roseberry, who is eagerly positioned at ition for the role of vice chair, um, schoolwork district president.
Second?
Yes, second.
Motion's been made and seconded to elect Stephanie Roseberry as vice chair, Lake County School District 7. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone else, anyone opposed, anyone else, other than you? Anyone opposed? All right, motion carries. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Give it a hand here.
I'm not going to be here for the next four months.
You mean I shouldn't have been very specific? Just going either.
Okay, consent agenda. Yes, Mr. Chair. Club activity contract, coaching recommendations, middle school volleyball. Anybody that I have.
Would we all approve in one swoop or are you pulling out separately?
Let's see, and then there was the.
We still laid items.
And there's the laid items, okay, okay.
We still have steps to do, then. I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, motion carries.
Okay.
Announcements? None, Mr. Chair. Laid items. So we have, no issues. Do they have the very often present?
Yes, you do, it should have been the very last thing in your pile.
Right here, I see it, right here.
So you have elementary volunteer recommendations approved for Mr. Cahill?
Approved, they've been through the district process and I'm always very fortunate, the elementary volleyball, to get a very nice bunch of volunteers to fill up, just to help teachers out.
I'm going to reapprove the elementary volunteer recommendation as presented by Mr. Cahill.
A second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the volunteer, late school, elementary volunteer recommendations by Mr. Cahill. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
I'd like to quite add a few things there.
Probably a few more next question. 12-2?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I would recommend that you consider approving 12-2, 12-3, and 12-4 all in one swoop. It just has to do with signatures, self-explanatory, can we read there what that is?
Okay, I see it.
And that's, this is in adherence to policy, board policy, or is there something that instructs us that this has to be done?
This is a matter of movement forward because of what happened personnelized.
It's good business practices.
Yes, protects things, our district financial interests.
Yep, you can always change it, practice and get resolved.
Well, I guess that's, correct, that's the un said part. So I would like that to be in the minutes that it's. What I wanted to say.
Well, given a better resolution, we'll, we'll give you, we adjust it, just as much as we've adjusted now.
Correct.
It could be amended again.
Amended, readily amended.
So is that, is there a motion?
I'll make, yeah, we'll go ahead.
I'll make, will we approve resolutions, excuse me, I lost the number. 12-2, 12-3, 12-4?
Resolutions 20, 21, and 22 as presented.
A second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded to approve resolutions 20, 21, and 22 as presented. All those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, motion carries. 12-5?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'm interested in sort of Jesse in terms of the head wrestling coach recommendation.
Yeah, I'm recommending Brett Prock to be our head wrestling coach. Brett is currently our assistant football coach and head baseball coach, and is very involved in our coaching and just does a phenomenal job. And so I recommend Brett to be our head wrestling coach.
He's just going to get hard on him.
I know. Going to be tired.
No.
Oh, yeah.
As tired as I was taking all those tournaments.
What is this?
Comes out.
What, is this, is this kind of like dad saying, well, now, now that you've done that, do, do it again?
I just bring the baby to me and have a nice.
Yeah, that's right.
Trip, I'll see you at three in the morning.
Yeah. And, and they go to mostly tournaments these days, that's right. There's a couple home matches, right, often, yeah, and I, yeah, they seem like they're more than duels, often triples and stuff like that.
So is there a motion to approve Brett as our?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
To approve Brett as our wrestling, head wrestling coach.
Second?
All right, motion's been made and seconded to approve Brett Prock as our head wrestling coach. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries, good. All right, 12-6?
Yes, Mr. Chair, what you have here in front of you is a coaching recommendation for JP Boys, and I'll let Jesse recommend.
Yeah, it's a recommendation for Joseph Butler as our assistant football coach, be the head JP coach. Joseph's been coaching our program before, strong community ties, and really, really excited to get Joseph back in there, and I know he's, he's really excited to get the opportunity, so.
I move we approve the recommendation of Joseph Butler as the head JP Boys basketball coach. Great hope he.
Awesome. All right, motion's been made and seconded to approve Joseph Butler as our head JP Boys basketball coach and assistant, assistant coach.
Just JP.
Just our JP Boys coach.
And he'd probably be.
Yeah. Doesn't regret.
You're right, sure.
All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? All right.
You make your vice and all of a sudden she's adding the.
Okay, so, next board reading agenda items.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we did not get to district goals tonight, so we'll find you to discuss that next time. And we're also going to have, oh, district and school report cards at the next board meeting. Those were issued officially for public review this last week. The council will have a presentation on that.
Financial report for September.
Okay, the financial report for September. Well, the tour building at Union, like we discussed. We did, there was a number of them that we pushed off this agenda to the next, and I can't remember what they are.
Yeah, workbooks is down, so they're, they're plenty right now.
Workbooks down?
Oh, right, maybe you think it's.
We'll, we'll be getting workbooks as soon as we can.
We need to fix our phone.
Were you in trouble getting it late? Yeah, I've had a number of people say that, and so we're looking into that, trying to figure what's going on.
All right, well, to that, we welcome the adjournment. Thanks.